Yes, I'm available.
Very good. Okay, sir. Mr. Chairman, we do have a quorum and it is 10:01. The meeting is recording.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. I hereby call to order this meeting, the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Wednesday, October 18th, and the time is 10:01 a.m. Would those commissioners that are in attendance please identify themselves and state as to whether they are here in person or via telephone or via Google meets?
This is Aaron Feinsten. I'm here via Google meets.
This is Joe Pennington. I'm participating via telephone and Google meets.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I'm Scott Fletcher. I am participating by telephone. We have a full slate and a full commission, which is great. Let's get to B, our new business. B1 is pursuant to ARS Section 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36. The renewal license application submitted by Mr. Patrick Baumann for a 2023 amateur MMA combatant license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to this application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Baumann is 36 years old. He's three and two as an amateur MMA combatant, and I do feel comfortable recommending his approval. I would like to share with you his training regimen. He trains from one to two and a half hours each day, five days a week. He says morning he runs and bikes and lifts weights. In the afternoons, he spars, and in the evenings, he trains grappling. He said he feels like he's going to knock his opponent out cold, and he has not experienced any recent injuries. And again, I do recommend his approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, thoughts about this application?
No questions from you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions either.
Okay, the chairman feels the same way and will be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36 years old, I move that we renew the license application by Mr. Patrick Baumann for a 2023 amateur MMA combatant license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Congratulations, Mr. Baumann. B2, as we move on, is pursuant to ARS Sections 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36. The renewal license application submitted by Mr. Gabriel Rodriguez for a 2023 professional MMA combatant license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Rodriguez's application?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rodriguez did not submit all of the required documentation timely, and therefore I request or I recommend that we table this item.
Okay, great. Thank you, and I think we shall do just that. We will table B2 until we have everything we need. More to come with Mr. Rodriguez at some point, hopefully. B3 is the review of the commission's authority to adopt rule sets under AAC R19-2-D601A. The commission may vote to go into executive session under ARS Section 38-431.03a3 and/or 4 in order to discuss with its attorneys on this matter. Mr. Vella?
Mr. Chairman, I do recommend that we go into executive session to discuss this matter with AAG Marciano.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I got two ayes there. Is everybody on board with this? Okay, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We are headed to executive session. Mr. Vella, please clear the room and get us moving in the right direction, if you will.
Yes, sir. All Commissioners, just a reminder to join into the other link that was sent to you.
Good dear Lord. Okay.
Mr. Baumann, you are free to leave your motion. It has been passed and you've been approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I see you and I believe Commissioner Pennington is with us. Commissioner, can you hear me?
He's muted.
Commissioner Pennington, I believe you're muted unless you're joining in via telephone. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I don't have audio for Commissioner Pennington yet, so we'll just give it just a moment.
Okay.
Okay. Hold on. Commissioner, can you hear me? Commissioner Pennington?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, great. Mr. Chairman, do you have a quorum, sir?
Very good. We are back in the public session regarding item B three. I would like to instruct Mr. Vella, Mr. Estrada, to do some research regarding bare knuckle boxing, its new arrangement with the A B C, and how it might apply to section AAC R nineteen dash two dash D six oh one A, if you would be so kind. Makes sense?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you all. Let's press on to see our information reports. Item one is our event reports. The following events were approved by the Executive Director from August sixteenth to October sixteenth. The first is a request from Rough Nation LLC for approval of an MMA event to be held at the Celebrity Theater in Phoenix, Arizona on Saturday, October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three. That concludes our event reports. Mr. Vella, any thoughts about our events?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. There were a couple of other events that were approved, but they have passed, and I did not add them to the agenda because I wasn't sure if proper procedure, but we did have an event, Iron Boy Boxing, on October seventh, and that went very well, and we're looking forward to the Rough event on October twenty eighth.
Okay, very good, and I should include that pursuant to ARS sections thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero-two notices hereby given to the general public that commission members of the Arizona Boxing and MMA Commission will be in attendance at the aforementioned events. As such, a quorum of the commission may be present, but commission members will not be discussing business unless necessary to do so by means of an emergency ringside meeting as authorized by ARS section five dash two two three. That leads us into C two for Sportgate concussion protocol. Mr. Vella, you speak to Sportgate, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We are heading down the home stretch, if you will, with regard to the Sportgate concussion protocol. I'm very excited to mention that we have prepared standard work for how we are going to implement the Sportgate concussion protocol, and I do know it's been, it's been a quite some time. It's been a long journey over this year getting these things in motion, but we are certainly doing the work to ensure that it is a seamless implementation and that it, it works well for our stakeholders and our, our licensees. With that said, we do intend to pilot the Sportgate model in December. We have two events on December second, and those I'm aiming to, I'm working with promoters to inform them of that, and if all goes well, we will continue and launch officially in January of two thousand twenty-four.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioner Pennington, any thoughts about Sportgate?
Uh, no, I'm just delighted to see that we are approaching this and approaching the kickoff date for it. It's been something, as you know, Mr. Chairman, that we've been working towards for a long time in the concussion protocol area. So I really appreciate the work that Mr. Vella has done and the others to get this in place.
Yes, yes, here, here, let's get this in place. I shudder to think how long ago it was we started talking about this, Commissioner. It's a long time. But we're here, we're on the precipice, so let's push it across the line. Thank you, Mr. Vella, for your efforts on this. It's, it's highly important. Speaking of stakeholder meetings, C three is our upcoming stakeholder meeting on Monday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Vella, will you expound on that? Do you have a time for it yet?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So we, we did send out an initial invitation to that meeting. The meeting will begin at three P M. That is a Monday, again, November twentieth, and we anticipate the meeting to last roughly three hours. And with that said, I will be sending out an updated invite along with an updated agenda for the meeting this Friday, one month, which is a one-month notice before the meeting, and then I intend to also send out reminders frequently over the next month. Attendance at this meeting is going to be crucially important for our stakeholders. We are going to be going over some changes and some very important expectations, not just for the new year, but just to bring everybody into alignment, and we're also going to have a Q and A session to ensure that we're allowing stakeholders and licensees to voice their opinions and work to resolve anything, just, just to grow and continue to develop.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Vella. We are looking forward to that. Uh, C four is requirements for combatants thirty-six years and older. Mr. Vella?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So in our last meeting, our special meeting, Commissioner Feinstein had asked me to present the requirements that we do have for, for fighters over the, or combatants over the age of thirty-six years old. So I, I did want to speak to that and provide that information. In ARS Title five dash two two eight subsection F three states that, or statute states that for persons over the age of thirty-six years, the results of a stress test that is administered by a physician licensed pursuant to Title thirty-two, Chapter thirteen or seventeen, accompanied by a clearance letter and the results of an electrocardiogram that demonstrates normal cardiovascular function, these results shall be completed within twenty-four months before the person submits the license application. In addition to that, for persons over the age of forty years old, or of over forty years of age, is if recommended by an examining physician, the results of a brain magnetic resonance imaging scan. Those requirements, of course, are in addition to the general requirements for a physical exam, an annual physical exam, a dilated eye exam, and the required blood work examinations. Now, that said, the age of thirty-six years is when we do bring those combatants to the commission for approval, and Commissioner Feinstein had, had inquired about changing that age or if that was a suitable option, and that would require a legislative change as this is written in statute.
Understood. Um, why don't we? Yes, Commissioner, please.
The, uh, is it written in statute that the commission has to review and approve combatants over age thirty-six? Or is it just additional requirements for the physical?
So that is not expressly stated, and we, we intend to, Commissioner, based on, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I've, I've just got an additional thought, but go ahead.
Okay, so based on your request in our last meeting, we are compiling that list of what has been delegated to the Executive Director and and, and that way there we could address if, if the over age fighter scenario is something that you would also like to delegate or the commission would like to delegate, that could be addressed. Generally, this has not been delegated historically, and it is something that we, we certainly want more eyes on, I think, for, for fighters over the age of thirty-six, just for safety.
And that, I think, is, is included in the legislation and the additional requirements. Uh, back when I first started serving on the commission, a fighter age thirty-six usually was somebody that was really shock worn, had been around a long time, had taken quite a bit of punishment, and I think that's the reason that the commission reserved that function to approve fighters over age thirty-six. In the ensuing twenty years, thirty-six is now the twenty-six, uh, given the improvement in health and conditioning and other aspects of combatants as well as just the general public. Uh, so I, for one, would, would appreciate the staff really looking at that and seeing is over thirty-six, uh, under forty something that the Executive Director could be, uh, delegated to perform versus, uh, all of the age thirty-six that we're getting now. So that's just, that's just my thought. Uh, then, Mr. Chairman, if I might double back to the stakeholders meeting, Mr. Vella, where will that be held?
Commissioner, that stakeholders meeting will be held on site at our office, one hundred north.
At your office? Okay. Okay, great. So I plan on attending, so thank you. Mr. Chairman, I apologize for interrupting on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, we appreciate your input. Um, Mr. Vella, why don't we leave this topic on the agenda for next time we go through? It'd be nice to hear from Commissioner Feinstein. Uh, I think it's an important topic. We spend a lot of our time talking to people over the age of thirty-six, and I'd like to make sure we're doing everything correctly. I think Commissioner Feinstein could help us make it down the path in that direction. So if you just leave it on the agenda, we do it again next time, that'd be great.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I've got it noted.
Great, thank you. Uh, pressing on, D is our call for the public. Mr. Vella, are those, are there folks there that like to talk to us?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised. Briefly, if there's anyone, please use the raise hand function. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. E is our call for the commission. It is pursuant to ARS section five dash, five dash, I just started with five dash, sorry. It's ARS section thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero-two K. Commission members of the Executive Director may introduce a summary of current events, ask questions, and/or make comments. Gentlemen, Mr. Vella, what thoughts have you?
Mr. Chairman, not much to, not much to say. I, I will circle back to the November twentieth meeting. It is very important, and again, I encourage all of our stakeholders to attend that. Um, I will note that there will be a hybrid option, so in-person is certainly preferred, but we will have the meeting capability of joining online. Uh, that said, I would also just like to recognize the tremendous work of our commission staff and, and all that's going on in Arizona, also the tremendous work of our local promoters and our, and everybody in Arizona. I think we're in a very good position, and I'm excited for the continued growth that we're seeing. I think we're in a very good position, and I'm excited for the continued growth that we're seeing and for all of our upcoming events.
Fantastic. Thank you for your efforts as well. Um, that's, that's quite a team you put together, and great things are upcoming shortly. Mr. Fine, Commissioner Feinstein is not with us. I'm running on fumes here. Commissioner Pennington, what thoughts do you have?
Chairman, I have no, I have no comments or, or suggestions at this point.
Perfect. I feel the exact same way, which means F is an announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at ten A M. on Wednesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and is subject to change based on a quorum, leading us to G, the notion of a possible adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. We are officially adjourned. Thank you all for your time and efforts. Take care.